I have an analogy about a bowl of crack.
Oh.
And how that relates to secession.
I gotta hear that.
You're hanging out in the House of Sunny Podcast where it's always sunny, mostly because of your host, comedian and YouTuber Sunny Lowman. Wanna know what Sunny and her friends are thinking about this week? Well, here she is, Sunny Lowman.
Hey, everybody. Welcome to the House of Sunny Podcast. I'm here with Doug from The Rational Capitalist. How's it going, Doug?
It's pretty good. Pretty good. How are you?
Are you a rational capitalist today?
Um, indeed, indeed. I am at peak rationality as always for the-
Rational capitalist.
I'm at, I'm at peak capitalist for the show.
Awesome. We got some, we just have like a nice grab bag of stories. Um, I'm good. I think we've got a royal report. It's so exciting. And then we have, uh, just different things that have popped up for me. We'll just talk about nothing major going on really. I mean, a lot of little fun stories. So should we start with a royal? No, let's not start with a royal. What I wanna start with-
Tease it. Make the audience wait. They're dying for that.
Wait till you hear what Meghan Markle has done now. She's not political, but she's getting political. So, uh, everybody's like, why should I pay attention to culture? Well, Meghan Markle's coming for ya. That's all I gotta say. All right. Um, my cat is here. Hello, Nico. Have you guys met my cat?
We've heard a lot of stories about this cat. This cat's a menace.
There he is.
That's the cat that was terrorizing your neighborhood. Oh, yeah. Very pretty cat.
He's a cutie.
Yeah, very pretty.
Um, okay, so I wanted to, just kind of going from last, I wanna do a little bit of a recap on last week's. We got a lot of really good feedback. Um, people pretty much agree. And I had a really interesting conversation with a nurse in a, in a lobby that I wanted to tell everybody about because it felt really good. It felt really powerful. And, you know, this is what the average person can do, I think. Um, besides this podcast, I'm not doing anything else. So I'm kinda like the average person, like, what can I do? What can I do to take a stand and make a difference? So I had a doctor appointment. I show up, this nurse, she was an actual nurse behind the desk. This was in an infusion center. So it's like, the people who are the receptionists are actually nurses. Everybody in there is a nurse, cuz people get drugs that cause them to-
So you're gonna be-
Crash and, and, uh, I was getting iron. And, you know, you can be allergic to iron and you can have a reaction and then-
Sure.
They have to resuscitate you. So they're all like, high quality nurses in these place, in this type of doctor office. And I'm checking in and I can't remember what prompted it, but she goes, are you vaccinated? And I could just tell by the way she said it. She was pro, pro me being vaccinated. Okay? You can just tell based on the context and the way she said it. And I'm standing in the lobby and there are all these people behind. And I'm thinking, my first thought was, isn't there a privacy issue to the, like, don't yell out my health situation? You know, they're usually really good about, like, when you go up to a doctor's window, they kind of, you know, they don't broadcast what they're talking to you about to the whole frickin' lobby. But in this case-
Hey, is your small penis problem still, you still have all that shit going on with your small penis?
How's, how's that problem you having with your butt?
Is that poop still coming out everywhere? Dude, that's private. I have a, by the way, as a quick aside, I have a nurse, there's a receptionist at this doctor I go to and she's notorious. I think she finally retired, but she was notorious for like, at the reception saying, so are you getting this injection of the, you know, like she was, I'm like, hey, chill, chill lady.
Right. I mean, this doesn't like make you uncomfortable. And so, you know, people are pretty good about it. And she's like, says this really loud to the point that everyone can hear. And so-
Bullshit.
I say, I say to her, I don't really talk about that. Like, I just kinda said it like that. And I was feeling a little bit, um, passive. You know, you're in a doctor's office, you're there for health issues. I'm like, I don't really talk about that. I, I started feeling defensive and kinda nervous. And then she says, um, uh, you know, I have autoimmune condition. And so then she starts talking to me about that. And she's like, well, if you're, if you're hesitant, uh, because of your autoimmune, like she's saying this really loud. Because if your autoimmune, um, I have some information for you. And I have this doctor who's, uh, who talks like, and then she just starts doing, I can just hear her doing the talking points, that, you know, it's safe and effective.
Here, smell this rag, Sunny. The chloroform rag. She's gonna knock you out.
You, you get the like, the, the-
Talking points.
The talking points. I'm trying to think of it. It's safe and effective.
Oh, my God.
90%, like, it'll protect you from SIR, like blah, 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 like, you know? And then I said, and then I just got pissed. Like, uh, so at first I was like going, uh huh, uh huh, oh, yeah, huh. You know, like you do when you want someone to shut up, you know? Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Oh, mm-hmm. I understand that. Um, and then I just was like, I'm not letting this lady get away with this BS, you know? And I said, I raised my voice. I went up an octave. So everyone could hear me on purpose. And I go, I think it's a personal decision. Like, I go, I think it's a personal, private decision that a person should make with their doctor. I think everybody is different and I don't think these should be mandated. And like I just, I said, there are adverse events. People have died from this vaccine and like, I just-
Yeah. Hell, yeah.
You know what? If you're gonna go through your talking points, I'm gonna go through my talking.
Yeah.
And she backed down. She, in fact, like kindly, she was sort of like, yeah, oh, I know. You're right. You're right. Like, she kinda was like that. And then, uh, I said, you know, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna weigh the cost and the, and the benefits. And then I'm gonna make a decision with my doctor.
Wow.
And she just-
Bravo.
I felt like the cheer, like people should have cheered. I was waiting for the-
But no one cheered?
No. But-
Crickets?
The way that she became kind of friendly and I didn't yell at her. I, I may have sounded like I was yelling there. I didn't actually yell at her. I just, I raised my voice so that everyone could hear me. And I just said, well, you know, you know, and I kinda went calmly through my, I think that there are, there are risks to these things. And people have died. And she's like, oh, there have been 6,000 deaths in VAERS. And I'm like, well, there've been double that at this point. But VAERS is really inaccurate. We don't really know what the adverse, you know? I, and so we're just like having this loud conversation in the lobby, you know? And I guess I just thought if-
Which is inappropriate in and of itself. That's not-
Completely.
No medical professional should be discussing something like this with a patient in a lobby.
Right. But she started it. So I'm like, I'm gonna crush this woman because first of all, I'm probably smarter. I know more about this than she does cuz she's puking out these-
Sure.
Talking points.
And then they, they think that they're the informed. They think that you're the ignorant rube.
But it was funny though, because every time I said something like, you can still spread it, you can still, you know, it's not, it-
Still transmissible.
Every time I was saying this, she was like, yeah, yeah. It's like she knew that. She actually had heard that. And so I was just saying what she already knew cuz she obviously does read up on what's going on or did. And, uh, anyway, I felt like, you know what? I'm really proud of myself that I said something and that I, that I went loud cuz she was loud. I went loud back, kindly brought up the truth that I know. I'm not, I'm just not gonna let people, like my typical attitude in interacting with people in these scenarios is not to engage. I don't know if you do that, but like, if somebody starts talking to me about stuff like this, I just pass it. I go passive. I don't wanna talk about it. I don't, like, I'm in a doctor's office. I'm there for something else. I have no interest in debating, like, you know?
You have to decide whether it's a battle you wanna fight, you know?
Well, I think after this experience, I've decided, given some of these issues that I think are pretty serious, like if you concede your right to your own private medical care, that is a deadly concession and it has to be like a line. And I am just not going to let these conversations go. And I kind of had the same feeling about environmentalism. When people say recycling BS to me in public or, uh, try to talk to me about that in public, I, I fight back that one too. I decided that in like the mid 90s that I'm not gonna let these people get away with that this is like a given. Because it's not a given. It is not a given that I should recycle this piece of paper. And I'm not gonna let them get away with that idea, that it's just, of course. Because people like us tend to just be like, okay, all right, already, you know? I'm not, I, there are two issues now that I'm not gonna do that. Environmentalism and mandates. Mandated medicine or this kind of one size fits all medicine attitude.
Yeah.
And, um, I feel really good about that decision. And I think it went really well, actually. First of all, I think I informed the entire lobby that if they're thinking these thoughts, they're not alone. So I, I might have given somebody courage. But also, I, I sort of put this nurse in her place that, you know what, you, you're gonna be challenged. You can't just spew this shit. So-
Well, let me tell you, I, I will take your lobby, um, revolution. And I'm going to raise you a school board.
Oh, yes. I was gonna ask you about this.
So, long story short, the school board was deciding whether or not, you know, they're gonna relax some of their, their mandates and their mask policies. And they, they had brought in a physician to the school board a couple of weeks ago. And they only brought in one doctor. And what do you, what side do you think that doctor was?
Did the doctors say that putting masks on children so that they can't breathe and they can't see other people's faces? And is really good for them?
You know what he said? They don't mind. The kids don't mind. And there was such a outrage from us, from the audience a couple of weeks ago that the whole thing got really ugly. And so at this one, before it even started, the guy who is running it, the, the head bureaucrat of the board, he goes, listen, you know, he gives this big speech about civility and stuff. And he's like, if there's any applause or any out, you know, outpouring or, or whatever, I'm gonna shut, I'm gonna shut this meeting down and we will not even discuss it as a board, what we're gonna, you know? Like, he's gonna, he's gonna hurt all the kids and not like make a good decision because he's mad about the crowd.
His parents are a little rowdy. Well, you know, he's gotten, uh, he's gotten a moral boost to say that by the federal government deciding that parents are getting too emotional and rowdy.
Insurrectionist.
And so now he can say, hey, don't be, you know, this is bad if you guys get too excited.
So anyways, um, I brought, uh, with me, there's a local doctor group here that has formed. And I think Dr. Corey in that video that you sent, hopefully you'll link to that, um, and with, with Chris Martenson, was talking about all these like organic grassroots doctors groups that are popping up everywhere of just like very reasonable, rational, scientific oriented doctors who are like, hey, we're looking at the data. We don't agree with the, you know, with this bullshit. Like, we're gonna start to speak out. And so I was able to get some doctors, uh, friends of mine. Sunny, I'm friends with many doctors.
I am too. Except that's because they're my actual doctors.
They're not actually friends of yours. They're more like-
I, I wish they were just my friends. No, they're my doctors. But they know me so well.
Friends. But anyways, they, they came cuz they're, they're forming this group and they're, they're, they're getting into this, you know? So they came and they talked to some other parents beforehand because the parents were like, oh, my God, thank you for coming. We need you. This is, we've been fighting against this and fighting and no one will listen to us. And so anyways, the doctors got up and spoke and it was a pretty big deal cuz three doctors in a row of my group got up, all like, these are like board certified entities. This is not like, oh, I'm a astrologer. I'm a doctor of astrology from Arizona. So this is like, serious people. And they're like, look, here's the deal. This is what we think, you know? And so everyone kinda sat up and took note. And then after that, dozens of parents were coming up and every single one was like, my kid's been out of school for three weeks because they said someone, you know, was, cuz of contact tracing or, you know, someone may have known someone who knew someone who shook someone's hand who had COVID. So they got kicked out of school and they missed their prom and tests and they're, they're ruined. And this one girl got up, she was like, literally having a mental, like a student was in the process of having a mental breakdown over the last few months because of all the stuff that's going on, the way they're handling it and treating it. And the kids are being divided and organically sort of dividing themselves up between vaccinated and unvaccinated. And some are not reporting anything because they're afraid it's gonna shut their school sport down, you know? Like, just, just an all out awful situation has now developed. And, um, so all these parents are pushing back against us. And some of them were very, one woman got up, she was like a Chinese woman. And she was like, this is communism, you know, everyone in here, I, I know what party you're in by who's wearing a mask in this auditorium right now. And, you know, Syria, like this was got, this was like, and after she got done, people started applauding. And the guy's like, I'm gonna shut this down. I'm gonna close the, you know, I'll clear the courtroom. You know, it was like one of those situations. And I got up and spoke and, um, then everybody left. No, just kidding. Um, I even spoke. And so anyways, there were like one or two tepid people that got up who were like, um, I support the masks and thanks for your service, NPC. You know, people-
Masks are safe and effective.
Yes. And, um, so anyways, we kind of all left and we were, it was like, well, you know, cuz, cuz the, the ma, the, the board, the council of scholars that are all sitting, they're all sitting like-
That way, doesn't it?
They're on a stage and they're all 20 feet apart and they've all got like-
Yeah.
Like face shields on and they're like, thank you for speaking to us today.
The council of scholars. If, if you don't know that reference, that's a reference to Ayn Rand's novel Anthem.
So, so we were not hopeful. And then like a couple of hours after the thing, it, it came out that they actually changed their policy.
Incredible. Congratulations.
They didn't like sweep it all away or anything, but it was like, no, if, if you had, if you've had a contact, like, yeah, you can still stay in school. You said, yeah, it was a victory. And, uh, we got some emails like, thank you, thank you, thank you. Now they want him to speak at another board. And, um, it was in the paper. And then funny, I was telling you this the other day. I can't name names, but a friend of mine who is a doctor got a little visit at his hospital from the executives who never visit him. We're like, oh, little speech you did the other day.
Know you need a memo on that PPS report?
Exactly. So I'm gonna need you to go in and come in on Saturday.
I bet it was in that voice, like literally.
It was. It was like, so he goes, I guess he says, I'm like, um, so what did you say? What exactly did you say? Cuz, cuz of course, the article that came out in the local paper, it was like totally misquoted everybody. Like, oh, a bunch of freaks got up and were, you know, you know, like fringe conspiracy people and, you know, and these doctors are against masks and quarantines. It's not at all what they said. They were very reasonable and very, like down the mid, non-contra, you know? If anything, they could have been even, you know, more strident in their opinion. But anyways, this was a real victory and it just shows you that like showing up, if you have any credentials or, or in any situation, show up to this stuff and you will have an immediate impact.
And, and what we've said before on this show, join, join together. Get, you know, the doctors come as a block of four or five. I think that's way more powerful than one doctor showing up. And, you know, moms should get together in a group of a dozen, find a dozen moms of the school that agree with you and just start making noise. Um, it actually does work to be in a group. There's a group, there's like human psychology will put more, and they will believe more a group than they will a person. Or they'll take that more seriously, I guess. Or, or they'll, you know, it will, it will mean different things to people.
Well, they knew they had to do something because when this many people showed up, particularly people who are credentialed and not just one or two kind of people that they could pass off as crazy, but people who are like bringing their children, parents who are concerned. One woman rolled out, she had, um, she had put all the VAERS, um, adverse events on a scroll, like thousands of adverse events. And she rolled the scroll across the stage. She's like, hey, I just wanna show everyone what the VAERS is showing. So she rolls it out and she keeps rolling it, rolling it across the stage.
Yeah.
And so she did that, you know, just to, just for, just for effect, pure rhetorical effect.
Thing with kids particularly is sickening, given the, the low risk and the high risk of myocarditis to boys. Uh, it's like a seven, they have a seven-
It's like six to seven acts, yeah. For, yeah. And my son, I had to rush my son to the emergency room. And, and here, you know what the Israeli data shows in September? The Israeli data shows that kids between 12 and 15, you know what the risk of a severe case, not a death, just even having a severe case, the risk per 100,000 kids between 12 and 15 of, of having, not just getting COVID, of having a severe case. You get COVID and it's like, oh, yeah. It's not even a severe, I'm saying like has a severe case. Like, okay, I have to go to the hospital or doctor.
12 to 15, both sexes?
Point four per 100,000.
What?
So if you, that's in Israeli data. Go to Jeffrey Morris's site, um, covid-data-science.com. And he's a pro vax guy. But if you look at the data, it's point four. Now, for an 80 year old, it's like maybe like 200. And this is for unvaxxed people. This is not for, this is for unvaxxed kids. It's point four for 100,000. If you're like 80, it's like 250 for 100,000, which is still 0.2%, which is, which is still low, but it's still, you know, something. But this is point four. So in 20, and they're talking about rolling out this vaccine right now in America to 28 million kids. So that would mean if you extrapolate that point four out to 28 million, 114 kids out of 28 million may have severe cases. You're telling me 20, how many of those kids, those 28 million are gonna have some serious adverse events as a result of the vaccine? At least, I mean, is it gonna be more than 114?
Why can't we take those 114 kids that are gonna have a serious case and treat them? Why does it have to be a vac, a vaccine to help, you know, prevent that? Because we, there are treatments. There are treatments for serious COVID. And you could also, you know, make PE a bigger deal in school right now and get kids like to lose some weight. The, cuz the kids that are, the-
Yeah, the kids that have severe events, usually they, they have comorbidities, they're obese, they have diabetes.
Yeah.
Whatever. You don't even, that's not even stratified by comorbidities. That's just like point four per 100,000 random 12 to 15. And that's from the Israeli data where they keep track of everything.
Alex Berensen went through the, the cases of severe COVID for children or something like from some study. He went through every single case. It might've been this Israeli thing. And every, like, all but like one child had a serious, had a serious health problem. So it's not even like fat kids. It's kids with really bad, big health problems.
No, and I know the data in our local, I know our data in our local area and zero kids have died from it. And so this is not a high risk to kids. And, but there is a certainly a risk, and that's part of what I said when I spoke to the board, was there's certainly a risk of, and this is documented, I, I like gave them a peer reviewed journal article of like, here are all the potential risks to kids, not to mention, like, not just physical risks, like CO2 intoxication, things like that. But the, the psychological damage that it, it, it causes for, um, and the, the interpersonal and verbal uh, communication problems that have, particularly with like autistic people, special needs. But little kids, like most of our communication is nonverbal. It's in the face. So you're seriously causing-
Think about how our children are not-
Problems. Yeah.
My daughter's seven. I'm worried she's not learning.
Yeah. Hey, seven year olds. Like, that's how they're learning right now.
Well, she's not learning how to read her teacher's face and her, and her classmates. And her classmates, I, I think I was saying this on the podcast, they're supposed to, the school's really been good. And they, we're in California, so you can have a lot of class outside. And they said, we, unfortunately, we have to make them wear masks this year. Last year, they didn't have to. And, uh, and to compensate, we're going to do a lot more outside. They're, they've set up a bunch of classrooms outside. And so, so, and then I've been volunteering there on Mondays, um, helping teach knitting. So frickin' cute. And so-
That was your major.
Yeah, I majored in-
So you're an expert.
I made the sweater. So I was there and none of the kids are taking their masks off outside. So I'm like outside teaching them knitting and they're all masked up. And I'm like, hey, kids, you know, you can take your masks off now. And they do. It's like they need to be reminded cuz they're little frickin' kids. So I'm gonna write a letter and say, you guys have to, you guys need to push this. Cuz when they're outside, they need to take their masks off. They need this break.
Yes.
And-
God.
So I told my daughter, the more you wear this mask, the more brain damage you'll have.
Good. It's true?
It is true.
It is.
I told her she's gonna be brain damaged. So she needs to remember to take it off because she's so susceptible to this crap. And she's got this thing now I'm trying to deal with where she's afraid of germs.
Yeah. It's inducing germophobia.
It is. She, what, what happened the other day? I went like this, like every mom, and I was wiping something on her face.
She's like, oh.
She went, ah, I don't want your saliva on me. I'm like, well, you kissed me. And she's like, I don't, I don't even wanna kiss your germs, she said. And I'm like, oh, honey.
One of the journal papers was mentioning the effect on the immune, on the immune system. Kids, like the whole purpose of childhood is building up immunity by getting dirty and, and interacting with all these germs and stuff.
I told her, if she doesn't quit, I'm gonna roll her in mud. And I'm not gonna let her wipe her hands. Because the other thing she's, uh, in the, we, in the middle of the night, the lights were off and like she's in bed and I'm kinda like there with her. And all of a sudden, she gets out of bed. I'm like, what are you doing? I smell the hand sanitizer.
Oh, God.
What are you doing? She's got like a squirt bottle.
That's dangerous.
She squirt and-
That's really dangerous.
And she puts that stuff on her hands. And I'm like, why are you sanitizing your hands? You're going to bed. She's like, well, I just picked my nose. I said, Lucia, you cannot get germs from your own germs. I'm like, these are your germs. So I, I don't know how I'm gonna work on this. But now I have this new project where I have to work on dirtying up my daughter and getting her mentally over washing her hands constantly and sanitizing and stuff.
It's a psychosis.
It is. All right. I wanna, I wanna move on. Those were really good stories. The point being, everybody has to speak out. This, this stuff has got to stop. Um, okay. Speaking of the propaganda and the, um, NPC stuff, check this out. I saw this this morning. It was trending on Twitter. Um, I don't know if you've been following, I'm not really following this. But have you been following the, um, hang on? I wanna make sure I share. Have you been following the bill going through the election bill or something?
Yeah, the Republicans were filibustering it.
I guess.
The Democrats trying to nationalize the elections or something?
Yes. Well, not just that, but they're passing, you know, their typical Orwellian like free, you know, fit, free and fair elections bill that actually is about like making-
Where only Democrats will be able to control.
Yeah. It's their typical bullshit. And then on Twitter this morning, something like 70% of Americans was trending. So I, I was like, what is that? What's going on? And I go over and I took these screenshots. It's completely undemocratic that 41 GOP senators representing just 21% of country can filibuster legislation supported by 70% of Americans that would expand voting access for tens of millions. 41 senators who represent 21% of the country can filibuster something of Ameri, uh, most Americans can't support. We are broken. Republicans are blocking voting rights legislation supported by 70% of Americans. The vote is sacred and the filibuster. When 41 senators representing 30% of the population can block 70% of the, that's a problem. Abolish the filibuster. When 41% of Americans representing just 21% of the country can filibuster voting, 70% of them, then we don't live in a democracy or republic. We live in an oligarchy. Good morning and happy Thursday to everyone who is part of the 70% of Americans who support passing the voter rights. What do you call-
Lawrence Tribe, Robert, oh, no, my nemesis, Robert Reese.
What do you call a system in which 41 Republican senators representing just 21% of the population can stop voting rights legislation backed by 70% of American? How about broken? I need someone to explain to me why 41 Senate Republicans representing just 21% of the population can block voting rights legislation supported by 70% of Americans. Explain it to me like I'm in kindergarten. There's something terribly wrong with a system that allows 41 Senate Republicans representing 21% of the country to block voting rights legislation supported by nearly 70% of Americans. The filibuster must go. I mean, this like literally took me five minutes. I, I mean, I went to the thing- I, I mean, I went to the thing and I just started screenshotting down the row and then I threw this in Photoshop. Um, there were hundreds of these. And I'm like, this just happened and this went out. You know what I'm saying? Like, this is there. And they don't even care how obvious this is. Not a single person here is doing any independent thinking. You know? And they don't care that you can see that they are pushing out talking points and propaganda. I think that's weird.
Um, have you seen, well, there's montages of this that where they go out to the local news affiliates? Where you have hundreds of, like, you know, the local CBS affiliate or wherever. And, and you know, like, everyone's saying the same exact talking point. That's exactly what they do. And by the way, like, do they not understand the American system? Like, the Senate represents the state. It's not the, the, the.
It's not a majority.
It's not a majority rule. That wasn't the, that was why they set up the Senate. Was because they didn't want a majority of like big city people controlling the entire country. They wanted every state to have equal representation. That's the point of the Senate.
Yeah.
God.
But they, they wanna end the filibuster for that same reason. They want a majority vote on everything in this country. And they don't want the Electoral College and they don't want the Senate, like the way the Senate, I mean, they're just, they're just such scammers.
Whatever vestige we have of the original, like founding ideas to prevent complete centralization, they wanna get rid of. And they're very smart to go after that.
They're very good at it.
That's the only thing that's standing in their way.
Look how they pushed out that exact twenty one percent, twenty one percent of senators can stop seventy, seventy percent. Who, do they really think seventy percent of Americans want their stupid ass Democrat elections forever bill? It's not true. But they've come up with this, they just come up with a number, they pull it out of their butts. And then they come up with this phrase.
Brilliant.
And they push it out to everybody and they, and everybody just repeats it and repeats it and repeats it. And nobody who listens to them cares that they can tell that it's a talking point. That's what's weird to me is that none of these people are thinking for themselves. And none of the people who would fall for that are thinking that for themselves. A- and, you know, it just got really clear with the Democrats not too long ago that they have stopped trying to mask that they're corrupt.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's a, you know what? I've no, I mean, I think that's the big, one of the biggest changes is that in the eighties and nineties, when I was following politics, there was always like a veneer where they had to play a game.
Right.
Because there was a reasonable middle.
They had to pretend to like America. They had to pretend to be for the cons, they still have to pretend to be like for America, democracy somehow, which isn't America.
Yeah, there were certain taboos and third rails, like there's things they couldn't do.
The constitution, which they know, nobody knows what that even means. So.
Yeah, you couldn't be, like, there was, um, when Joe Biden got caught plagiarizing and lying in the eighties about his college record. Yeah, he was like a total washout, like he was a joke, like, and this was, this was not like the, this was like the mainstream, every single mainstream outlet. And I posted the video of montage of it.
Yeah.
They were like, Joe Biden's done, he's a joke, he's such a liar. And they've got him saying like, I finished second in my class and I was the blah, blah, blah. And the next thing is like, Joe Biden did not finish second in his class. Joe Biden did not do this. Joe Biden did not do.
Yeah.
And, and then he got caught plagiarizing in law school and he was just a total, he was a total. And at that time, even the left and the Democrats were like, this is too much. This is like a bridge to, like, we can't. And now they just realize that none of that shit matters. As long as they're in control of the media, they, well, seventy percent of Americans. And they don't care. It's, it's so they, they pulled the mask off. They don't, and that, to me, that's like what authoritarianism is, is it's like, it was the old line, I don't know, forgot who said this, but it's like, we know they're lying, they know they're lying.
Oh, it's so.
They know that, we know that they're lying. They're just, it's like China.
Yeah, because they, yeah, I mean, you're right, like totalitarianism is literally that they have to force you to just take it, whatever it is. And that's kinda where we're at with the current administration and the way the media is. A lot of this we just have to take.
There was a, there was, um, a NBA player, um, said that um, Ja- Jean Ping, the Chinese guy is a dictator. And you know, the NBA is really tied into China. So he publicly, and the NBA gets billions from China, so they broadcast, they livestream their games. And he said on like live TV, like, you know, free the Tibetan people, Chongqing is a dictator. And so China, to prove they're not a dictatorship, pulled down this thing. They will no longer livestream Celtics games. And they said that, um, they told the, the platform that, um, they must resolutely resist any behavior that damages national harmony and the dignity of the motherland. Just to prove that they're not dictators.
Yeah.
So, I mean, this is like, that's true authoritarianism, where you do something really authoritarian, like censor everybody. To prove that, and then say, we must resist this tyranny and, and then preserve the dignity of the motherland. And then everyone goes, yes, 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 yes.
Creepy.
That's true authoritarianism.
Yeah, okay. Uh, let's move on to the royal report. You ready?
Now it's time for the House of Sunny's Royal Watch.
So our favorite royal, Meghan Markle, is at it again. Um, Meghan Markle turns, here's the headline, turns lobbyist and writes to Pelosi and Schumer saying paid leave for parents should be a national right. Duchess details growing up at the four ninety nine Sizzler salad bar because that's all she could afford. And I wanna know what's wrong with that. What's wrong with the four ninety nine Sizzler bar?
That's amazing. For four ninety nine, you can get a all you can eat salad bar.
Yeah, that's freaking awesome.
That sounds like amazing. Is that still four ninety nine?
Dude.
It's probably like twenty dollars now.
Should everybody grow up with like this fancy life? I don't understand, like.
Yes.
I enjoyed my Sizzler salad bars or whatever. I mean, it wasn't that, but something similar, right?
If everybody's a Duchess, then nobody's a Duchess.
That's right. Okay.
Dear leader.
Dear leader Schumer and Speaker Pelosi.
Dear leader. I like dear leader.
Sounds very North Korean.
Yeah.
I am not an elected official and I'm not a politician. I'm quoting now, for those of you just listening. I am, like many, an engaged citizen and a parent. And because you and your congressional colleagues have a role in shaping family outcomes for generations to come, that's how I'm writing to you at this deeply important time as a mom to advocate for paid leave. Okay, she has no, she has no like horse in this race. She doesn't need paid leave. She's, they're multi, multimillionaires. They don't, they've had a couple of kids. She's a mom, but she didn't struggle. You know what I'm saying? She didn't, she doesn't have a horse in this. She's just literally operating as a persona. I'm not a politician. Well, yeah, you are. You're being a politician here. You're being political. Over the past twenty months, the pandemic has exposed long existing fault lines in our communities. Her writing is so freaking saccharine. I just, what's going on here? Why have I?
I'm not, I like how she says she's not, I'm not an elective. I'm a monarch.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm part of the monarchy. I was like not elected at all. I was just granted.
I'm merely a Duchess.
I was granted a noble title. I didn't bother to get elected and get a majority of people in my area to actually like me. I just fucked this guy because I'm a hot Hollywood actress and he married me. And now I got granted a noble title. And, and so just, why don't you hear me out?
Yeah, right. That's what she's literally done. She's had sex with a prince and had a couple of babies. Okay. Um, over the past twenty months, the pandemic has exposed long existing fault lines in our communities. At an alarming rate, millions of women dropped out of the workforce. You mean, we're forced to friggin' stay home, staying home with their kids as schools and daycares were closed by you tyrannical government? Okay, no, she doesn't say that. And looking after loved ones full time, the working mom or parent is facing the conflict of being present or being paid. The sacrifice of either comes at a great cost. Now conservatives are constantly saying, it's a really big problem that families can't exist on one income and that moms can't stay home and raise their kids anymore. That something's wrong with our economy when we used to be able to do that, but somehow we can't do that now.
Like fifty percent tax rates? So.
Maybe inflation?
Inflation and taxes, like give us our fucking money back and maybe we could stay at home.
Yeah. And she's talking about.
Work half the year for the government?
She's talking about a situation of lockdowns and closed schools caused by the Democrats she's writing to. But is she gonna ask them to never do that again? No, she's gonna ask them to do a handout and to force businesses to pay people for having to take care of their children. Okay. Uh, for many, this sacrifice goes back further than the past twenty months. It's twenty or thirty years, even longer, decades of giving time, body and endless energy, not just in pursuit of the American dream, but simply the dream of stability. What is she talking about?
So you have to be, that's reality.
I know. This is like life.
Giving time, body and endless energy in pursuit of your dream.
Twenty to thirty years of giving time, body and energy.
God forbid.
Oh, my God.
Energy to pursue your dream?
I thought it was supposed to all just be handed to me. But it was to me. I don't know what you guys are talking about.
Just marry the, marry the dude.
Marry a prince.
Don't these people know what they're doing?
She's so cringe, man.
God.
I grew up on a four ninety nine salad bar at Sizzler. I, I'm literally quoting her. I grew up on the four ninety nine salad bar at Sizzler. First of all, she did not. This girl went to Northwestern, paid for by her dad. She did not grow up on a four ninety nine salad bar at Sizzler. I grew up on a four ninety nine salad bar at Sizzler. Okay. It may have cost less back then, to be honest, I can't remember. But what I do remember was the feeling. I knew how hard my parents worked to afford this. Because even at five bucks, eating out with something special and I felt lucky, oh BS. No kid is going, oh my gosh, my parents worked so hard for this four ninety nine and I need to, like, no kid does that.
But, okay, who doesn't work? So, okay.
But also, so what, right? Parents work, you go out for dinner. It's a, it's a pleasure to go out to dinner with your family. Maybe it's a, maybe it's a luxury. And once in a while you do that. Is that something to like, think of as a bad thing?
No, it should be a land of cocaine where we eat the cake of the ground and everything is free.
Uh, it's, it's like she's saying, if you have to pay for anything, it's bad.
If you have to work, spend energy, you've gotta spend money, you go to the Sizzler. I mean, God forbid, this is awful. What an awful situation.
As a Girl Scout.
Girl Scout. Stop.
As a Girl Scout, when my troop would go to dinner for a big celebration, it was back to that same salad bar or the old spaghetti factory because that's what those families could afford to do.
The spaghetti factory is awesome.
The hell's wrong with these restaurants? Like, is it, does she want everybody to go to like Nobu? You know, I don't understand.
Mister Chow.
The spaghetti, the old spaghetti factory?
Dare they, oh, those poor kids. They had to go to the, they had to go to like, uh, uh, a mainstream restaurant where people serve them food for a few dollars and wait on them.
Middle class is so hard.
Oh, boy, wow.
Hi, I mean, this is middle class life and she's saying it's like a misery. This girl.
She's a Girl Scout?
For five minutes, probably. So she could make some money selling cookies, maybe. I started working at the local frozen yogurt shop at the age of thirteen.
Frozen yogurt shop. Oh, the mid, the horror.
She worked at a frozen yogurt shop. Terrible, right? I waited tables, babysat and piecemeal jobs together to cover odds and ends. I worked all my life and saved when and where I could, but even that was a luxury because usually it was about making ends meet at thirteen. And, and having enough to pay my rent and put gas in my car. Oh, dear.
She was paying rent and driving a car at thirteen?
When you're young, you have to scrim and save and work, apparently. Oh, that's just the worst.
Never heard of this. You know, I had a BMW when I was twelve. You know, when we, on, on the way to the five star, you know, Four Seasons, I don't know what she's talking about here.
Yeah. I expect many of your constituents have their own version of that story. Perhaps you do too. People in our country work incredibly hard and yet the ask is soft for a level playing field to achieve their version of a common dream. What is fair and equal and right, many of our economic systems are past their expiration date. Did you, is it? Capitalism is past its expiration date. And as you well know, too many Americans are forced to shortchange themselves when it comes to what matters to them. Oh, dear. You can't have everything you want at any moment.
You have to make choices.
You have to prioritize. This is like, normal life is so hard. Middle class American life is so hard. We need to give these people more.
This is like my three year old, like, at one time, you know, my three year old like wanted a toy. This literally happened. I'm like, where, where am I gonna get the money for that? And he said, just go to the bank.
Yeah.
Just go to the bank and put the card in the thing and the money comes out. Just don't you know?
Yeah. It's easy, Dad. I saw you, I saw you put a card in a machine, money popped out.
That's what they thought. You just go, you go to that building and you put the card in the machine and then you get them. Why don't you just do that? Not hard.
They're not wrong.
I'm celebrating here. I don't wanna go to the fucking spaghetti factory. I'm celebrating. I'm a Girl Scout.
I'm a Girl Scout.
Give me the money.
I'm a Girl Scout. I need more than the old spaghetti factory. Oh, my God. What is wrong with her?
Not, this is. This should be studied by like teams of psychiatrists.
There should be a class on how not to be like this in college. It should be.
Totally, yes.
This is how to grow up and not be a total, I don't know, like, she's insane.
This is like a manifesto of retardation. Like, this is, like, you go to a class on how to grow up. And this is the ma, this is like the, the, this is the document that everyone, it's like a biblical text.
It's no wonder that.
The Gospel of Markle.
This couple are being shunned by even the Obamas because they're just this stupid, you know? All right.
This letter is still going on.
In, it's, it's another page. Okay. In June, my husband and I welcomed.
We're gonna make us read this whole goddamn thing.
Oh, I'm reading the whole thing. It's fun. In June, my husband and I welcomed our second child. Like any parents, we were overjoyed.
Like any monarchs.
Listen to this. Like any parents, we were overjoyed. Uh, do you have to say that? Like, isn't that kinda weird? Like a.
Like she felt she needed to say that. Just, just to get this on the record, we were really overjoyed when our kids came.
I actually really like my babies. Uh, don't.
I just wanna paper trail here.
Don't think that I don't like my babies because I really do. She.
Overjoyed.
Like many parents, we were overwhelmed.
Talisman.
They were overwhelmed, you guys. Because their fifty million dollars couldn't hire them a nanny to help, right? They have nannies. Like many parents, we were overwhelmed. Um, welcome to being a mom. I'm sorry, but.
Welcome to like two billion years of human evolution.
Yeah, uh, uh, having a baby and raising a baby is, is actually work. You actually have to do something. Okay. Like fewer parents, we weren't confronted with the harsh reality of either spending those first few critical months with our baby or going back to work because I just worked the whole time because I don't really like my baby. Oh, no, that's not what she said. We knew we could take her home and in that vital and sacred stage, devote any and everything to our kids and to our family. We knew that by doing so, we wouldn't have to make impossible choices about childcare, work and medical care that so many have to make every single day. People have to prioritize and that's just not right.
So let's pass more taxes to give money to the people so that then less people
Yeah.
can stay at home with their kids because they have to work harder to pay the taxes. That's what she said.
Right. And, and I, I made a video, I don't know if you remember my comedy video where I took a dollar and like tried to explain how when it goes to the government.
You don't have it.
Passes through all this bureaucracy and they take like a portion of it out to pay for this and that other thing. And then they give it back to you. And by the time they give it back to you, it's, it's like a penny, you know? No family. No family should be faced with these decisions. Why not? This is life. No family should have to choose between earning a living and having the freedom to take care of their child or a loved one or themselves, as we would see with a comprehensive paid leave plan. I don't know what that means. Like, you get leave to take care of yourself?
You just have it all. You can take care of your kids, you don't have to work. Just pass the law and reality changes and morphs into a dreamland where everything is free and there are no choices and no priority, no priorities and no one has to work. Gosh, all we have to do is pass the law. Don't you know that, honey?
I mean, I do think.
Sign a bill.
I do think that more parents should stay home with their little kids. I, I think there's way too much pawning your kids, you know, and moms want to, a lot of moms wanna stay home with their kids. But, like you said, they're overtaxed, inflation is really hard on, on American families and.
Why wasn't that fifty years ago, a single man, uh, a parent, parents, the man could work and afford his entire family? But now we need two parents working and it's still not enough. It's because of inflation and tax?
Right, okay.
Why are there taxes? Cause the government spends everybody's money on shit like this.
Right, on shit like this, exactly. In taking care of your child, you take care of your community and you take care of your country.
Oh my god.
Can't believe she said that.
I love how she feels like she needs to really persuade Schumer and Pelosi to spend more money, to piss more money down the toilet.
But that's not what this is for. This is for the press. Okay, because when paid leave is a right, it's a right. We're creating a foundation that helps address mental health outcomes, healthcare costs, and economic strength at the starting line. Instead, I, I don't know, she's saying that family is a value, she sounds like a conservative. Like, family might, bad family situations might lead to bad mental health outcomes. How dare you?
No, that's not right. She's contradicting the, um.
Yeah, that's not the progressive party line.
No, it's from white, white people are what causes all these problems.
Really racist, actually. That's very white supremacist. Um, instead, as it stands now, we spend a fortune as a country paying into symptoms rather than causes. Cause the country pays for your medical care and your psychology care and your, what? No, individuals pay for that. I understand that with everything going on these days, people might find it easy to be apathetic about what's happening in Washington DC. Not me though, because I'm really awesome. And then equally, when it feels like your voice doesn't matter, you tend to use it less often. But with stakes like this high, stakes, but with stakes this high, none of us can afford to let apathy win. Like honestly, she's overdramatizing this issue, like stakes this high. We just have gone through a pandemic and a lockdown and we're about to have like a economic crash and a currency crash and people's kids are being masked and, and forced mandates of medicine and she's freaking stakes this high, we can't afford to be apathetic?
Does, does Sizzler have stakes?
Could she be more out of touch? I'm writing to you on behalf of millions of American families who are using their voices to say that comprehensive paid leave should not be a place to compromise or negotiate.
No, no, you have to mandate it.
Talk to your business, your employer about that.
Don't ask people for it.
You should be able to make your employer do it.
Just take it. Yeah, just, just seize it, seize the money. You don't need to negotiate or compromise.
Comes out of a machine anyway, Doug.
Yeah.
Put your card in, the money comes out. In fact, most nations have already paid, already have paid leave policies in place.
Oh.
They do.
Estonia. Well, if Estonia.
Most nations, do, do you think that's true? Most nations can afford to pay or they just mandate that businesses do it and then businesses can't afford it, so they don't hire people, so their economies stink. Estonia, for example, offers over a year and a half of leave to be shared by new parents. Oh, can you imagine Doug paying your employee a year and a half to stay home?
Year and a half.
Holy crap. Many other countries have robust programs that give months of time for both parents, birth or adoptive, to be home with their child. The United States, in stark contrast, does not federally guarantee any person a single day of paid leave, and that's underlined. And fewer than, in other words, the United States must be wrong because everybody else is doing it differently? Like, I remember a time when America was the example to like, you know, we're free and we have this great economy and all this wealth and all this comfort because we're doing it right, idiot.
No, we have to be more like Estonia. Estonia is getting.
Maybe we should move to Estonia.
Estonian model of government, yeah. The leaders of the world.
If only America were more like Estonia.
My gosh.
And fewer than one.
We could only dream of being like Estonia.
Uh, workers get to stay home not only for a year and a half, but like their whole life because there's no jobs.
And oh, and hey, guess what? If they mandate that I have to pay someone for a year and a half to stay at home, guess who I'm not going to ever fucking hire?
A woman?
Ever.
Well, it would be paternity and maternity.
Yeah, then I just won't hire anyone.
Gonna hire anybody in childbearing year, time, like, everybody's gotta be, if you're sixty-five and older, you got a job with me.
I wonder why companies are moving to other countries like China. Can't figure that out.
Okay. And fewer than one in four workers has dedicated paid family leave through their employer. Fewer than one in four workers. So about twenty-five percent of people already have paid leave in this country. I'm sure you agree, and she's probably counting like the thirteen-year-old who works at frozen, frozen ice cream shop, doesn't have paid leave. I'm sure you agree, agree that if we are to continue to be exceptional, then we can't be the exception. Okay, wait a sec.
What?
Huh? It was a was a? If we wanna be exceptional, we can't be the exception.
No, that's a contradiction.
Total contradiction. The families you represent.
She thought that was really clever.
Yeah.
But it's actually a contradiction.
It actually makes absolutely no sense.
If you can't be the exception, you're like everybody else, then you're not exceptional.
You're not gonna be exceptional, Meghan.
Sorry, buddy.
The families you represent need your strong leadership. I'm begging you, Pelosi and Schumer, to take more taxes and power, please.
Please take other people's money and give it to someone else.
With paid leave on the cusp of becoming a national reality, I trust you will meet this moment. I know you must hear from your constituents about the choices they are facing every day to make ends meet and care for their families.
This has gotta stop.
Paid leave should be a national right, rather than a patchwork option. In other words, like, don't let businesses decide, patchwork, capitalism is patchwork. Communism is one size fits all. That's what we want. Not patchwork, one blanket, everybody the same. Everybody doing the same thing, everybody forced to have this one blanket, no patchwork. Honestly, these communists, I can't stand it. Okay. Where was I?
I think you're done.
No, no, I'm gonna finish. It's great. Where's, I'm looking for, okay.
I, I really think you're done.
Do, do, pay leave should, right, patchwork option limited to those who have employers with policies in place or those who live in one of the few states where a leave program exists, probably California.
Here's an idea, by the way, how about don't have fucking kids if you can't afford it? Just wanna throw that out there.
How about reducing my damn taxes and stop printing money? If we're going to create a new era of family-first policies, let's make sure that includes a strong paid leave program for every American that's guaranteed, accessible, and encouraged without stigma and penalty. I know how politically charged things can and have become, but this isn't about right or left. Oh, yes, it is.
See, that's, that's the key right there. It's truth. This isn't, this, this is not subject to opinion. This is truth. This is beyond right and left.
It's not about right and left, it's about right or wrong. This is about putting families above politics.
Yes.
And for a refreshing change, it's something we all seem to agree on.
Yeah, oh, we do, yeah.
Conservatives love family, let's pass more taxes and make them poorer, yay! At a point when everything feels so divisive, let this be a shared goal that unites us. I'm, and she's not divisive at all. So on behalf of my family, Archie and Lily and Harry, I thank you. Honestly. I thank you for considering this letter and on behalf of all families, I ask you to ensure this consequential moment is not lost, as ever, the Duchess of Sussex. So it's Archie, Lily, and Harry, but she's the Duchess. Wow, she's such a piece of work. What a doofus Harry is.
All right, God, what a moron.
Isn't that fun? That's the royal report, man. This woman. That's all I had today. You wanna talk about Dave Chappelle and Netflix? Did you see that protest?
No, tell me.
Well, a bunch of employees at Netflix protested the fact that this thing exists on the platform, the Chappelle.
Oh, okay, I did hear that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And there's a video that went around, there's like one guy there with a, I'm, I support Dave, you know, sign. And the mob attacked him and took his sign and broke it apart.
Whoa, at Netflix? These are the Netflix people?
Netflix employees.
Okay, wow.
It's really starting to feel like China, you know?
Yeah.
Cultural revolution.
Yeah, it's like, it's the cultural guards, the, the, the red guards that would, um, take it upon themselves to enforce the revolution. If you weren't revolutionary enough, even if you were on board, if you didn't signify uh, a certain amount of exuberance, uh, uh, about your revolutionariness. Exuberance about your revolutionary, that's a great one.
That, that's the whole CRT thing with the, you know, you can't just not be racist. You have to be anti-racist, which means you have to be an activist. And, and people got crap, like if you didn't put the BLM black box on your Instagram, you, you were problematic and you were gonna be called out and it's all very creepy. I've got other pop culture news, I guess I could share this. Do you like sci-fi?
No.
Well, this is the new Dune movie coming out.
I want to like sci-fi, but no one makes good sci-fi, so I don't like it.
Well, if you ever read, if you ever read Dune, uh, you know, that's pretty good.
Okay.
And the new Dune is coming out, I'm kind of excited about it, except that I really, these are the two leads.
What?
These actors.
Gross.
And.
What are they, like fifty pounds each?
Yeah, they're, well.
Guy.
That's, that guy, I, I, first of all, I don't think either one of these people are, are very good actors.
He looks like, he looks like Screech and the guy from Beverly Hills, nine two one oh had a baby. Remember Screech from Saved by the Bell?
It boy right now. He's, he's like the leading man in all the new stuff.
Gross.
And he's not a good actor and he's very effeminate and skinny and like unmanly.
Looks really pasty.
Yeah, and.
Get a tan, dude. Go to the tanning.
The, the role is, he's playing a prince who's, um, who should be a little more manly, I think. I think, but. And then she is the woman who took down Fashion Police, the show. So I'll never forgive her for that. I don't know if, this is Zendaya. So back, like, two days after Joan Rivers died, they had a Fashion Police show. I couldn't believe they continued on with the show, but they very courageously continued. And like Joan's not even cold in her grave when this girl gets offended by something the Fashion Police said. Because she's on the red carpet getting criticized for her appearance.
Oh my god.
And she decided it was a racist comment and.
I remember that.
Because Joan wasn't around, he completely folded, like they just, you know? And the, the person on the Fashion Police who's made the comment had to come out with this big apology and then the show like literally got canceled pretty soon after that because turns out you can't be funny if you can't criticize people on the red carpet. Like the, what's the point of Fashion Police if you can't be like, man, check out her stupid hair, you know, like.
It's like the fashion support network.
Yeah, it became that and it became boring and.
The fashion enablers.
I mean, Joan was rolling over in her grave and if she had been alive when this had happened, she would have been like, oh, please. This girl is the most privileged girl in the world, walking the red carpet, beautiful, she's beautiful. She's a terrific, she's a very stylish person. It's one thing I think she does do well is she, she's kind of pretty good at her own personal style. She's very stylish. Um, in a way that no Hollywood stylist can do, like she knows her own body and she knows what looks good on her and she's really a good dresser. And in this case, she was wearing dreadlocks. And the host joked, I can smell the patchouli from here. I think she said. And frankly, that's not a, that's not a racial thing. People with dreadlocks, white or black, tended to be pot-smoking, patchouli-wearing people. That's just what it is, you know? Lighten up. And even if it were a black thing, so what?
What's up with this guy's jacket? Do you remember chess king in the eighties? Like when breakdancing and like the Michael Jackson thriller stuff was in?
It's a little like that, all these fake zippers. Let's see if we can get some other pictures of these two clowns. Here's a full length.
Yeah, no, I, I like her dress, so I can't, I can't say anything negative about that.
She looks great. She always looks great.
Yeah, she's, she's very beautiful. This guy though, I don't, this guy is, is shorter than she is. Look at, look at the length of his pants too.
She is shorter. Look how her, her forehead is, is taller. Yeah, you're right.
You've seen this more and more now, they're trying to make the men and the women look equal in the pictures and everything. So that the man is never like in a dominant position.
So this, here's a masculine man, total doofus. He looks high, but.
That guy's a clown too. He was, wasn't he the guy that made that other guy apologize on Twitter?
Yes, oh yes, total hall monitor dick. I think like somebody drank water out of a plastic water bottle.
Yeah, dude.
And he was like, how dare you?
Yeah, dude, we gotta be more careful about the plastic, yeah.
You should be drinking out of a glass bottle. Total, total douche.
This is where we're at.
So here's Timothy Chalamet in the role as Paul Atreides.
I don't like it. I don't like him. Yeah, they, they're already clown, I take it away. I, I, I don't want any of this. Take it all away. It's gross. These are like waify clowns, they look like Hollywood. Um, they, they each look like they're forty pounds. I mean, they look emaciated. They're not like, it's not masculine and feminine at all.
It's not masculine. Look how feminine he is, you know? And I'm try, he played like a king recently in some Netflix show, let me see if I can, yeah.
He looks like he should be in one of those like doctor, what was that like kid doctor show, Doogie Howser? He looks like one of those kids, like a Doogie Howser kid, like, oh, you're the precocious genius, like nerd that everyone picks on, but you're smart.
He played, I'm trying to figure out, he played a, a British king in The King and he had to like wield like one of those big medieval swords and stuff. And it was so funny, it was just like so obviously not something he was cut out for, you know?
Wielding a sword, they probably had to like CGI it or something.
He's wearing chain mail. I bet that chain mail was made out of foam because he's so weak. Like, how could he deal with that?
Look at him, he looks like Howdy Doody. Oh my.
And I, I watched this movie and I just remember thinking, this kid, I can't believe he was cast in this role as a, as a old-timey British monarch warrior, knight.
It looks like he would be kicked out of N'Sync or like a boy by the Jonas Brothers for being too much of a, um, like dude, you're not even, you're not even cool enough for our, our gay boy band.
He looks good in fur though.
He does, he does wear that fur well. All right.
Yeah, so anyway, that's, that's the latest pop culture news is.
I don't follow this stuff.
We're like old people. Oh my god, these kids today.
We're like the Muppet, the two old men in the Muppet, that's right.
In the balcony. Yeah, if only we were as funny.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the problem.
Yeah. All right, everybody, thanks for joining.
We're not trying to be funny, we're, study, this is not about funny or unfunny, this is about right or wrong.
Oh, yes.
It's beyond comedy. This is about. Beyond comedy. This is about truth and uniting.
And, and being on the right side of history and what, what did she say? The, what did she say about capitalism? It's, uh, expired.
Yeah, it's beyond its expiration date.
So are we?
Our expiration date is past. This system of complaining about the kids.
It's so expired. Okay. Hey, if you guys have a audience out there, if you have anything you want us to talk about, put it in the comments. Uh, I really love getting your comments. I've been getting a lot of messages lately to emails and stuff. I really like that. Let me know what you're thinking about, what you want to talk about. It helps me shape the show and, uh, it's going pretty well so far. We're doing. We had a pretty big audience the last couple of shows. I don't know why. Controversial topic, I guess.
Yeah, we've got, uh.
Next, next.
Dozens of people.
Week Doug's gonna get naked. So tune in for that.
Yeah, be care, yeah. Be warned. I finally un, I finally unveil myself.
Uh, by the way, speaking of that, your profile picture cracks me up. Can we show?
Oh yeah, did you, oh, you gotta show this, yeah.
Let me share.
Just a picture though.
Let me just pull up and I'll Google this thing because it's so funny.
This, no, just pull up the Kanye mask. You don't even have to.
That's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna Google it.
So Kanye met with Michael Cohen, like Trump's lawyer, that got convicted of tax evasion or whatever. And he donned a prosthetic mask.
Doing by the way.
I love this.
Why is he meeting with this guy?
Coolest thing I've ever seen.
Is it? It's not coming up. Cohen. Meeting. So he's at this meeting. That's Kanye, right there. That's Kanye West. Guy mask. He's wearing a white dude mask. I don't know what he's doing, meeting with this guy. But so Doug put as his profile picture on Facebook. Here, here's another picture of it.
Yeah, that's my avatar now. So cool.
How hilarious is that?
I'm so, yeah, I am so down with the, the mask concept. I would love to wear a prosthetic mask like that.
I would, I'm down to, I'd do it too. And after all this stuff and now that we have like Joe Biden in office and everything, I would prefer a Kanye presidency. I don't know if you would, but I think that would be spectacular. Since we have to deal with these wacko clowns anyway, why not make it Kanye?
I, I, I might take Kathy Griffith over, uh, Joe Biden. I mean, I'd take just about anybody.
Yeah, I would too. Just about anybody. All right. Hey, everybody. Thanks for joining us. We'll see you next week.